All right, at six o'clock, I'm gonna call this meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise for the pleasure of ladies and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark, you have some prayer, please.
Heavenly Father, come boldly for your time, grace, as my Lord, and thank you for your blessing. Father, thank you for the high and masterly place called Salem, Missouri. Praise the Lord that everything that's said and done, the Lord's not will be according to your will and your way. Hand over each and everyone else. Take us home safely tonight in this means of making praise.
Amen.
Next up is real call, I am Proven. Alderman Williams?
Present.
Alderman Bullerjack?
Present.
Alderwoman Duncan?
Present.
Alderwoman Sisko?
Present.
City Administrator Burbidge?
Present.
City Court Colored?
Present.
City Attorney Weber?
Present.
Director of Police Works Nash? Chief of Police Chase? Finance School for Stacy Houston?
Present.
And I see that we have your... Done.
Okay.
All right, any other staff? Next up, I need a motion to the approval of tonight's agenda. I'm going to approve the agenda. No second? I will call for the vote. Alderman Bullerjack?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderwoman Duncan?
Yes.
And Alderwoman Sisko?
Yes.
Next up is the consent agenda. I would go to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
I will call for the vote. Alderman Bullerjack?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sisko?
Yes.
Alderwoman Duncan?
Yes.
Now here are persons tonight. Next up is new miscellaneous business, public comment policy.
This one's on the agenda tonight. This is a proposed policy to help streamline the public engagement. The board to share their views and concerns with us, make it easier process for those involved. There are some questions that I have for Attorney Weber, some legal questions, so I'd like to table this item for close session for a future meeting to ask those questions with our privilege communication with the attorney. No, I don't know. I don't have any questions on it, so I hope you're appreciative of the policy then. Yeah, that's all I got. Any other discussion?
This time I will call for the vote. Alderman Bullerjack?
Yes.
Alderwoman Duncan?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Yep.
And Alderwoman Sisko?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next up is our financial report. Miss Houston, come on down.
Okay, so this is an update on our tax revenue that we have received through November. So November tax revenues are up thirteen percent from November of last year. And as you did, as you saw in the consent agenda, we did receive sixty-eight hundred dollars. That's that additional city tax. I believe that to be the additional one percent sales tax, but I have reached out to Department of Revenue just for verification and I'm not back from the net. So year-to-date, we are up two percent compared to the same timeframe as last year. General fund sales tax, year-to-date, that's through November, we're at six hundred and thirty-three thousand. Parks and Rags, we're at two hundred and thirty-five thousand. Capital for Network, three hundred and thirteen thousand. Questions on this slide? Okay, and on the utility usage of revenues, and this is through October. So electric kilowatt hours sold is around seventeen point eight million kilowatt hours, and that is down four percent compared to same timeframe as last year. Electric revenues billed is a little over two point five million. Purchase of power, we have paid one point six million year-to-date. That's seven percent less than what we paid same timeframe as last year. Water consumption sold, we're at forty-four million gallons. That's down fifteen percent compared to same timeframe as last year. Water revenues billed, that's two hundred and eighty-six thousand. Sewer consumption sold, we're at thirty-nine million gallons. That is down twelve percent compared to same timeframe as last year. And revenue billed, we're at three hundred and seventy thousand. Okay, and this slide is just a total of all our fund revenues and expenditures compared to what we have budgeted. So so far, revenues we have brought in just under four point nine million. That is twenty-seven percent of what we have budgeted. Expenditures were close to four point seven million that we have spent so far, and that's twenty-seven percent of what we have budgeted also. So, um, as you can see, the beginning fund balance has started at seven point nine million, and so far through October, we're at just a little over eight million. Okay, and then this is just a breakout of what we just looked at. So you can list all the funds, the revenues and expenditures year-to-date, and then their ending balance. And that's all I have, if you have any questions?
No? Thank you. Next up, we have old business for planning and zoning, the conditional use permit for fifteen oh nine South Louise. Tabitha, I've asked Tabitha, I'll lead to come in to speak with us, to kind of give us an idea of the reason why the planning and zoning board voted no for the second time for the use of this property, conditional use permit. Maybe you possibly should a little bit of light?
So I will ask her answers to some of the questions that Tabitha did.
Okay.
Just in general, we voted six one to not approve the conditional use because it does not fit within our city codes. We also did take our conditions from our staff report that this does not fit within the city codes.
Can I address some of your concerns from the board?
I mean, I think, you know, we, we, once again, with NLOs detailing, you know, we, we did do NLOs, we did pass NLOs detailing, and we do have control over, you know, the permitting process here where it's, you know, we can review this if we see anything. Initially, we denied the first one a few months ago because we were concerned about the tires and the oil. You know, he didn't really have any kind of, well, he wasn't here, but he didn't have any, any way to dispose of that. Correctly, we weren't sure about those kind of hazardous wastes. You know, that kind of leads into tire care, you know, we could open up, open it up to, you know, we can review those each time, but, you know, if you open up a tire, you know, he's allowed to do tires here. Who says, you know, it would be unfair if we were allowed? So we asked him, or at least I asked him to resubmit with just the detailing, which he did. And I think, you know, it's, it's not really, you're not dealing with a lot of hazards there. And with that, I, you know, it's, it's, there's not a lot of mechanicing involved in that. There's not going to be oil, waste oil or waste tires involved here, I think. Running this kind of thing out of a garage, especially for, for bikes, I think is going to be fine in this, you know. As long as we had the same style of restrictions on, on his as we did with NLOs, which was things like no parking on the outside, a signage that was, you know, flat on the building instead of like in the street or anything like that, as well as time constraints on hours. Being that it's, you know, motorcycles and motorcycles are generally louder than, I, I don't mean it, I'm, I'm trying to talk to the board, so. I felt like I was excluding. You know, I understand that like a lot of motorcycles are generally louder, especially on the exhaust side. You know, we could limit it back to say like, cause I think with NLOs, there was no work to be done between the hours. I think of like midnight and five, I have the, the list, uh, here.
Would you, would you put that as like the state ordinance times, the silent?
Uh, I don't think we had any city ordinance times on that. But that would be, that would be like, with those same recommendations and those same kind of constraints, I think, in, in my, my opinion, I think it's fine for him to go ahead and run this business. We tabled it last time because we did want to get maybe some explanations from why, because we didn't hear why. We just saw that they denied it six to one, as well as Kayla, you aren't here as well, so we wanted to get some of your thoughts on it as well.
Appreciate that. I think that, um, you were right. That's great, go ahead. I think that it was recommended by multiple of us for him to go more of the detailing route of this. And that is just, you know, I'm gonna almost say exactly what Alderman Williams said was because when you're working a mechanic shop, the, the chemicals have to go somewhere, the tires have to go somewhere. And so there's a whole lot of health risks going on there that was concerning. And it did not comply to our ordinance and our codes. So when we did recommend that, somebody had a conversation with me, so I'm assuming Kyle talked to him and encouraged him to come back with a detailing place. I do not see a harm in it, in my own opinion as well, and that's just because, you know, as long as we put restrictions on it, such as ours of business, when he can and cannot bring a motorcycle in. And, you know, as I mentioned the first time he brought his proposal to us, there has not been any complaints that I'm aware of at the police department nor at the administrator's office that's been brought to my attention when I asked. So I would also probably recommend that we allow him to do his detailing business unless somebody else has some in light, some lightness of otherwise.
So Tabitha, was one of your reasonings, because I'm sure there's been multiple reports with committee members, was it because of the fact that it was Lord Dent's residential area?
So we did look at the two totally separate, they're very different. And so we took it case by case, and it is a very heavily dense populated area. Whereas a spot that's boarded up has a much larger area. It's connected to empty lots, so there was a big difference. So we did not say just because we approved one, we would approve the other.
And I think, Jared, do you say it was the closest residence was twenty-five each? Versus NLOs was a hundred and one feet?
It was a little vacant.
Yeah, I've got. Yeah, there's a lot of vacant properties there.
I've got the extension here.
I remember this. Yeah.
That's the population, uh, density kind of visual there for you. Those are the same, the images there are both, I think, a five hundred foot radius from the center of each building. So, um, should be very, very similar in area of all of those pictures. Red indicates where people are living. If there is no color, then there's nothing there. There's a green on the one page, that's where it's been vacant for four plus years. Sorry, so I think the closest one to the, the previous NLOs, the closest wall-to-wall distance was like a hundred and forty or fifty feet between that building and the closest occupied residence. On the Louise Street, it was about fifteen to twenty, uh, wall-to-wall. Fifteen feet to twenty feet between the two, of the first occupied residence in the, in the shop.
And there were neighbors that did come forward and state concerns?
Yes, in the beginning, before this all came to, um, planning and zoning here and more. I haven't heard anything since then.
Okay, because when I asked the administrator's office and also the police department, they said there had not been any complaints, which is what helped me with my ease of detailing.
If there was no complaints versus the...
I know one of them.
I think there were no documents.
No documentation.
Documentation at the administrator's office, and so many different people do answer the phone. So if there's nobody in that certain vicinity, right?
Right. There was zero document that I showed.
But there were concerns that were brought to light.
And I think too, the concerns that were brought up before the first meeting, it was that an actively ran shop that was not licensed, not...
And right now it's not running, correct?
Correct. So after that, I don't think it has been running to my understanding.
Which says there wouldn't be.
Yeah.
He had that proper documentation that owned a business in front of him.
Well, you would help.
He would have a license.
He was running a business without...
Well, I've had some of the surrounding neighbors reach out to me recently after the last previous discussion, and they were acceptable to like a conditional use permit, as long as it was like regular, like hours of service and it didn't involve like disturbing the peace and that's so forth. But I've had quite a few of the neighbors in the area reach out to me though. I, it is voice their opinion.
I mean, I think honestly, in my opinion, it's...
Just a little over fifteen.
Here's my opinion on this, my concern, and you're putting a commercial business in the middle of a highly dense residential area, which is going to affect people wanting to move to that area, if somebody wanted to decide to sell, whatever. Most people don't want to, you know what I mean? Move to an area that's not experienced with this area.
And I agree with that, same with the last one, there is a timeline on that, there was a timer. So if something happened with that area, started getting built up, you know, then you guys would have to decide again, is it still appropriate for that business to be there? Because you're right, we do run into that, and when you start looking at your map and we start pointing out, here's business, here's business. We have lost our residential areas, so people begin looking for some new residential, it starts getting lost.
To expand on Tabitha's point, and I was gonna say kind of Amanda's too, sorry, Alderwoman Duncan. You know, I live in the county, and in order to protect my property values, if there was a piece of property being for sale next door to me, there are a few years ago, twenty acres, my wife thought I was crazy going to buy it because we couldn't afford it, but I also said, you know, that's the only way to make sure that something doesn't come in here that's gonna destroy our property. So the point of planning and zoning inside the city would be to, to give someone a reasonable expectation of what's to come as we purchase a house in a residential area that needs renovation. And that's the way of planning, they'll be commissioned to tell the door to those things and advise if we're gonna move that area in a different direction or whether it looks like it.
I've been kind of back and forth on this. I've heard from someone that lives in that area that had raised concerns about noise, and I think that was really the only thing on that. You know, I mentioned in our last meeting, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to the conditional use permit with certain...
Yeah, with conditions.
Conditions.
The idea is to have conditions on it.
And for it to be reviewed within a year.
Yeah.
Or just two years, just in case something was to arise, would be reviewed again the next time.
Yeah, I think, I think if this started becoming, you know, like, let's say it started taking off and we're starting to see a lot of business come through there and we're starting to get complaints, then we review it and we, and we revisit it. That's, that's my thing. I, you know, currently, you know, and especially motorcycle writing is a very seasonal thing at that. You know, when you do have a lot of motorcycle writing, it is typically in summer, summertime hours where the days and days are longer and things like that as well. I know a lot of people will probably get their bikes detailed for putting away for the winter and things like that. And we have a lot of motorcycle riders in our area. I think, you know, having this business or losing this business would be bad for the general commercial idea of sale. So that's, that's my thing, like, you have a lot of, you have a lot of things. I, I would like a motor, you know, we used to have a motorcycle shop at one point. I would like to see them come back, you know, to be set for him on the way to getting an actual shop later on down the line if it starts taking off. I think detailing, you know, you're not, you're not doing a lot of industrial work or anything like that. You're not taking tires off or any kind of like, you don't have any kind of materials. I think this is okay, in my opinion. I would put a few more restrictions on it. I would like check it for the one year. So in, in my opinion, I wouldn't have commercial activity. NLOs, I think, went from like midnight to six or something like that. I wouldn't have commercial business or any activity from nine on, nine o'clock on. I would propose the same conditions of no more than three vehicles parked outside in twenty, for twenty-four hours. No signage that is lit, you'd have a four by eight signage against the building maximum. The permit is obviously not transferable, expires in a year, and can be revoked if things are not maintained. And then after a year, we could see if they got a lot of, you know, if they, if we are getting a lot of sound complaints and things like that from neighbors, like, hey, there's a lot of things going on, then I think, you know, we can ask them. I think trying to... That's my thought. And I, go ahead.
No, I will let you finish him.
Okay, uh, no, I was just gonna make a move.
Um, I also, you know, I really hope that this isn't taken advantage of, that this is strictly a detailing business, that it doesn't turn into a mechanic business or a tire shop or any of the sort. I do not think that the residential owner will do so, but I just wanted to make sure that I did say that out loud. So it's off my conscience that I just said, but I do want to see that this becomes a legal business in order to maintain that permit.
Sure.
Tabitha, did you have anything else to add?
I do worry because of neighbors who did come to us personally and voiced concerns that they were, they did not want it mentioned, that, you know, they wasn't gonna come and, and talk to us because they're afraid of some rapid retaliation or, you know...
Somebody came on top.
Do you have a, I mean, how many do you have, tabitha?
And to me personally, three. And I, and I know for a fact they wasn't calling the police department, you know, I asked them. They just happen to know that I was on this committee, and so they brought it to my attention. But that was their comment, it's like, this is our house, we get off work, we're at home, we wanna relax. If we wanted to be in commercial or industrial zone, that's where we would have purchased. And I think they are also concerned of losing the neighborhood deals. Right, you know, but that's just their concerns they brought to me.
Any questions for me on that end? Thank you guys for your time. This time, do I have a motion on the floor for the conditional use permit for ten oh nine South Louise?
I would move to approve the detail shop on Louise Street with the following conditions. That no commercial activity be done between the hours of nine and six. That we have no more than three vehicles parked outside for the period of twenty-four hours. There is no signage larger than four by eight feet, and it will not be lit at night. The permit is a non-transferable permit, it will expire in one year. And a, and the license can be revoked if certain, if the above conditions are not met. Those are what I would suggest.
I would second that, as long as there is zero mechanic work being done as well, tire shops.
And no additional mechanic, it is a detail shop.
Yeah.
I would amend it to include that no mechanical or oil-changing tire, uh, no mechanical repairs would be conducted.
I would second that.
How much, any amendments now?
Everything's done.
All right, free call for the bid. Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sisko?
Yes.
Alderman Bullerjack?
Yes.
And Alderwoman Duncan?
No.
All right. Next up is the first reading of Bill number thirty-five seventy-nine.
Bill number thirty-five seventy-nine, an ordinance renaming the community service committee to the community involvement committee and giving it new direction for the city of Salem, Missouri. Whereas the community service committee was created in nineteen eighty to oversee sanitation operation, police services use, use of city property and parks and recreation, and the city desires to give this committee new direction to reflect current conditions in this.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, I know I've talked about renaming this committee for quite some time. I was able to sit down with Administrator Burbidge and go over this and also just revamp it. My goal is to hopefully get more citizens involved, because community service sounds like such a punishment in our world today, you're doing community service as a torture versus getting in the community, being involved, helping oversee different events for the citizens and for the city. So I am hoping that this is going to be more attractive to people when they're signing up to join a committee.
I just have a comment, that's a heavy turnaround from being looking at sanitation operation police to...
It just, it just didn't make sense.
Yeah, it doesn't.
For the community service now hopefully to be, um, community involvement to be our sanitation. And in a way, it made sense as if we were to pick up trash after the citywide yard sales or to help volunteer pick up trash in the parks or et cetera, but it just didn't make sense. And it really didn't make sense to have the police department under community service as chief handles his department very well, so he does not need help from our committee to make sure that's running efficiently, so.
So close to getting volunteers.
All right, any other discussion? All right, maybe run along with the second reading of Bill number thirty-five seventy-eight.
Bill number thirty-five seventy-eight, an ordinance to name streets in the Masters Industrial Park in the city of Salem.
Any discussion on Bill number thirty-five seventy-eight? I will move to approve Bill number thirty-five seventy-eight.
I will say.
I will call for the vote. Alderman Bullerjack?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sisko?
Yes.
Alderwoman Duncan?
Yep.
And Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is, uh, reports to the official boards and committees. Ms. Burbidge, you were up first, now.
I will actually have, and I have no report personally for you this evening, but I am going to give the floor to Jeff Meadows with Archer Elgin, for some project updates.
Good evening. I turn you.
I can zoom in on some of the parts you want me to zoom in on.
I, a couple weeks ago, I think I believe Sally distributed a project update spreadsheet, so if I'll take any questions on that, if you have any advice, I'll focus on the, the schedule. Y'all have in front of you a, again, chart that, that shows the task orders that we're working on currently and looks at the, the larger milestones and schedule of such moving forward. Starting off with the downtown tap project, we are working through the MoDOT review process. We anticipate a couple more weeks of MoDOT review. I think we've actually resolved many of their comments at this point, and we also have authorization of funds from the bid. So we're looking at, at starting that bidding process within a couple weeks and then being able to award construction contract in hopefully February or so. So, and then construction throughout the, the spring and, and some of the months.
I have one question.
Yes.
So it says like construction starting possibly, you know, two, two sixteen, February sixteenth here and last. Do you, so we have a pretty big event that comes in March that, you know, is that a, like, do you expect that to be just, do you expect there to be destruction or anything like in the, in the major area there, I guess, like, or like, do you expect like things to be pulled up? Should we warn this, the event chairs of this committee if that, that's coming up? Or do you think like it'll be clear enough before that?
Sally had mentioned that, so we'll make sure when we start, when we go out to bid, we'll, we'll look at, based upon the timeline that we actually get that authorization to bid.
Yeah.
When we anticipate being able to award a contract. This is probably, I think those dates that were shown there are... Uh, this is probably, I think those dates that were shown there are, uh, from bidding time. But there's gonna be a review period for MoDOT to review the bids, there's gonna be, you know, time for the, the city count, for the board of aldermen to actually award that. So, and then we have up to ninety days from, from the actual bid until the award. So there's flexibility, flexibility in that, what I would suggest when we get to get a little bit closer, let me make some decisions on, on the schedule.
Okay.
Just push it probably to construction start until after that.
If I can add, we'll be in that timeframe, even if it flexes and shifts, we've also got Summer Fest, the Fourth of July Parade.
Yeah, there's a lot of things downtown.
That this could, right.
What we'll do then, um, is we'll identify all of those in the, in the bidding documents and notify the contractors so that he needs to have everything cleaned up and, and ready for those events when they come out of comes.
I don't wanna freak you out, I'm talking. Uh, yeah, uh, no, thank you, uh, cause, yeah, I know we've got a number of events, that one being very large and immediately in the area. So I, I figured like right when we start, you know, you'd have major construction or demolition.
And it's a common part of town.
And I understand those are pretty, you know, tight guidelines, it's not like as soon as you award the bid, they're right on there the next day, so.
We'll.
Yeah, as we get closer to time, I just.
We'll definitely wanna make a note of those different appreciations and, and the bidding documents and so the contractors aware.
Thanks.
And if I can, sorry Jeff, but before we move on, so the other thing that, so this is the, you know, kind of the first time I've seen the full kind of what this might look like. And I know it is probably for you guys too, and so thank you for the Gantt chart.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Um, the other piece of this is that as we think about our downtown businesses, we're probably, we should spend some time, and I did talk with Tabitha this afternoon just briefly, about maybe a marketing plan, about how do we help them get through this time period because their front door accesses are gonna be restricted. And so, you know, whether that's assisting with cleanup on third and, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, that.
Outside, um, you know, so, you know, we don't know exactly what that might look like yet, but we need to start the conversation now about how, how are we going to assist and maybe do some marketing to help these businesses through this. So, um, anyway, I just wanted to add that, but that's another piece of it.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. Jeff, have you worked with another city that's done a similar project to this and?
I have.
And how you guys handle that?
Yeah, and, and it's just, it's the communication with the contractor, making all of that, uh, upfront in the bidding process and part, and part of the contract documents, so.
Cool.
Anything else on the, the downtown?
No.
Uh, next is the, uh, task order fourteen, the collection system evaluation, that's the, the DNR grant that we're looking at the inflow infiltration in the, in the sewer system. Um, so, you know, the, one of the major, the biggest component of that study is comparing e- everyday dry weather flow to our peak flow during wet weather events. This has been, you know, a, a very dry, dry year, so we've not had a whole lot of, uh, peak flow events to point to. So we're continuing to, to, uh, we, we hope to hit some wet weather events over the, the, just the fall or the spring. And then, uh, so we have something to, to base our, our study on. Uh, we, we just have to, there, there is a deadline, but, and we can, we can show the weather data, and this is a weather dependent activity. So we're hoping to probably, if need be, we can get an extension on that as well from DNR. Um, the next one is task order fifteen, now that's the wastewater plant improvements. Um, you'll notice there's two O, there's two A and, and two B, we've talked about, the two A is being funded through the ARPA grant. Uh, two B is being funded through SRF loan and grant and potentially some other funding sources. Um, ARPA was, was designed by DNR to be streamlined. So there's a lot of environmental requirements and, and a lot of different requirements that, that takes some time that have been pulled out of that funding. The two B, the SRF funding, all of those are present. So, uh, our hope is that we are going to be able to, we're, we're going to be designing them concurrently, we're designing at the same time. Our hope is for, for bid efficiency and contractor efficiency, we'll get better numbers if we can bid them at the same time. We can't award them directly, two separate contracts, but if a contractor is interested in both of them, they might put, have a little better bid if you can bid both. So hoping that the SRF timeframe will allow us to bid in both at the same time. Uh, of course, ARPA has the, the deadline of, of final completion by, uh, the end of twenty twenty six. I do believe that, you know, if everything continues to move forward with, uh, with SRF, that we'll be able to do so. But right now, we're just showing them on, on concurrent paths and we'll know more later. Um, but it's a very significant design effort, we're looking at, um, DNR, um, permit applications submitted by May of twenty twenty four. Um, we show a couple, a couple months of, of, uh, of DNR review in that timeframe as well. It's really not showing up in that because it's some of those tasks are collapsed. Uh, but then we have bidding beginning in, um, probably June timeframe, um, to, to July. Awarding contracts in early fall of twenty twenty four. That's gonna give us, you know, over two years for construction completion, which I think certainly adequate. We want to keep that buffers on the, on the projects as, as big as we can because we, we're concerned about supply chain interruption. Just because there's a, a, a large amount of the, the projects that are, that are gonna be out to get another construction at that time. So we're trying to keep that as, uh, buffers as large as we can. The next one is the, um, the new, is task order sixteen, the new well and, and elevated storage tank out of, uh, highway seventy two. We're very close to the DNR submitter on that one, uh, I think we show it here in, in February. Uh, we're, we're ahead of that schedule, we'll, we'll probably be looking at mid-January, getting ready to submit that to DNR, submit to due time and, and then bidding in early spring. Uh, so if we bid in early spring, we're, we're looking at a, you know, late spring and early July, notice of award, uh, and notice to pursue for the contractor. The tower itself, you know, is gonna require a, a summertime for, for painting, uh, so it may get built in this in twenty twenty four. But we're, we're, we're pushing that completion date out to twenty twenty five to make sure that we have that, another, uh, season for, for that painting. And then the task order eighteen, lead service line inventory. Um, we did receive today, um, approval of our contract template from DNR. So that anticipate bringing that to your next board meeting, uh, or view consideration.
Thanks.
Um, we have the, the, yeah, the funding is, and DNR was pointing that out today, you know, the, the funding does not, um, terminate in October twenty twenty four. But you do have a requirement to have that lead service line inventory submitted to DNR by that time. So even if there's, and, and that's middle doesn't mean that it's done, it's gonna be an ongoing effort for many years because we're not gonna dig them all up and find all the lead service lines and so forth. And within this project, but, uh, we'll, we'll have to have a inventory submitted by that time, so. Um, and that's what we have in our agreements that will complete by that October twenty four timeframe.
Appreciate it, I like that, I like the Gantt chart, it's very nice.
Yeah, that was probably one of the biggest questions, just the timeline of the projects and then everything on all of them.
There's lots, there's lots to do and it's, it's good to, to kind of lay down what you said.
Yeah, so appreciate the updates. Hey, Jeff, I got one question for you. How long do you anticipate for the lead line service man? After it's all finalized and submitted, at least before October, how long do you anticipate that would take? As far as getting it, the project completed, the lead line service.
Okay, so we, the, the project that we're, that we are proposing and, and the contractor will bring to you next month. We anticipate that being completed by October.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, completed by time, you have all the paperwork and stuff turned in?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So we're gonna meet that deadline.
Okay.
Uh, what I was referring to is there's gonna be ongoing, you're gonna find.
Ongoing and mapping.
I think what we, we projected is that we're going to, um, that we're gonna, you know, everything will be mapped, we're gonna have the database that shows everything. Um, and we're gonna be able to actually excavate and observe about fifteen percent of, of all of the service lines.
Okay.
Within the funding that we have. So, I mean, that's the, that's the key, we, we submit, I think there's, uh, so, there's not enough funding to pick up every one of them and, and.
Right, yeah.
Upset of each one of them, so, um, the database is expected to be continually updated by the city from this point.
Okay. Okay, that's all I got.
And that fifteen percent is kind of a, it's a statistical, um, you know.
It's gonna vary.
It, and it's gonna be based upon all of the records research, research, um, and if there's a, um, certain number of homes that were built around the same timeframe, you know, then we wanna do one or two in that area. And if they're both consistent, then we'll move on to the next one. So that's, that's where we're coming up with that.
Okay. And that'll be all in compliance, I think this is like EPA mandated?
It's an EPA mandate, and, and we're very real guidance. Just do it.
Yeah.
And, and fortunately, we, we did receive some funding to do it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Next up is my report, and let's see what we got for on this week. Got the Christmas Parade of Light, Winter Wonderland is a Saturday, December the second, starting at five thirty. Uh, following after that, Trees and Trains is holding a special opening after the parade from six thirty to eight thirty. Um, the following day on Sunday, Keeping Christmas at Home, kinda help promote, uh, shopping locally. Uh, December the third at the Salem Upper Elementary School at sixteen oh one Dos Road from one to four. It's sponsored by the Dent County Dreamsicle Polar Plunge Team, just to help raise money for the Special Olympics, a great event. Recommend everybody to go on out. Uh, the last thing that I have is the New Year's Eve Ball will be hosted by the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce in Halle Dean County. It will be held twelve thirty one, two thousand twenty three at the Salem Community Center in West Armory. Tickets are now available at the Salem Chamber of Commerce and the Salem Community Center, center. Uh, let's see, it's fifty five dollars per person or a hundred dollars per couple. I also think that they, uh, reserve tables, two for eight, can't remember the price on it, but four hundred. Thank you, Cisco. Uh, the New Year's Eve Ball is presented by the American Family Insurance, uh, John Shaper, so thank you, John. Uh, other than that, that is all I have for this evening. Next up is Mr. Nash. Like in the back of the school bus.
Master, roll back this.
All right.
Good evening, guys. Um, yeah, weather for, weather for me, we're gonna do disconnects tomorrow, we would have done today. Uh, Sally checked the weather and it was gonna be pretty chilly tonight, so, uh, we didn't do it today, what was the weather in the morning, but planning on doing them tomorrow. I don't know how many will be on that list yet, I'll be waiting until tomorrow. Uh, when we find out how many's on that list, I'll send everyone an email that you all don't have any sort of. Uh, the salt building, uh, they're working on getting it completed. Um, Sally asked me to do an inventory of our equipment and, um, uh, I'm, it's gonna have the year, make, model, the I N number. And it's gonna have years of, um, how many more years we think we can use it? And that's gonna help her quite a bit and help you all in getting your budget prepared, so that you can kind of have an idea of what kind of rigs that you're looking at, that you're gonna be needing to, to replace. Um, we'll, I'll try to have that to her next week.
I will hold my breath.
You'll get a signed contract.
And, uh, and we'll be looking at other projects for next year's budget and we've got, I talked, Sally had asked me about a MoDOT project, um, that would tie with city sidewalks, guttering. And, um, we're going to look at that, I will, I got the numbers for what that cost will be. Um, we can, Sally's trying to find out if she can split it up three ways, uh, so she will have those figures to help with her, to help her buil- build her budget for next year. Um, we're try, we're trying to get the finalization on the boring project down here. Um, I finally got some more information on that after five this evening. Um, in the morning, I will get with Donnie, we will get the permits, uh, filled out, sent. They told us, they told us in, in Jeff City, as soon as they got those, that they will turn those right around. Uh, they're waiting on that information and we're waiting to get the information from the contractor, so we should have those. Um, we're doing la- we're doing last minute maintenance on our equipment for snow removal. Um, the, the stuff's in pretty good shape, but salt's hard on everything. So, um, they've got a couple of beds that they've got to do some application on, um, it's just ate through the bed and, uh, through the spreaders on the back, so. And they try to clean those as much as they can, but, you know, you can only do so much with that salt. And, um, the airport, the, the, uh, mowing at the airport is done. And I believe the mowing on all the properties that the city has around town is done. So we should be, grass is not growing anymore, you know, so we should be good on all those, so, and, um, that's all I've got.
Mark, have you heard of anything about the lighting at the airport about when pilots are coming in, that lighting's not working again at dark? Have they told you anything about that?
No.
Will you, somebody check on that and see? Thank you. We, we had someone a few months ago.
Reported.
Okay.
But it's been. We, we thought we had it fixed, I, I, yeah, I, I wanted it compacted.
They just brought it up, so I didn't know if it was in.
Okay.
Old news or new news? It's not working again, or?
Must be new news. So I'll have Josh to go out there tomorrow. Um, we have some transformers and we have some different pieces of, uh, equipment that we can repair of this, so. I'll have him, we'll try to go out tomorrow. Oh, also, I talked to Josh Hogan Friday, uh, the person that's doing the work, okay, he worked for the credit card and all that. When, when he was gonna do that a month or six weeks ago, the contractor for Bright Speed had dug through the Bright Speed cable, on cable. So we had to go through that process all over again to get somebody out there to fix it. The contractor that was there would not fix it, he said he didn't have, he couldn't. So we had to go through the process all over again with Bright Speed to get someone out there to fix it, we finally got it fixed. We've got a bore hole through the side of the building in the concrete to run a, uh, small conduit line in there for them to run the cable through to build the equipment that will be inside that building. And, uh, as soon as we get that, I contact Jason, he'll come back and hopefully we'll have that all going.
Yeah, so the, the internet access for the card readers through Bright Speed. So that's why I thought.
And did I understand, like, they broke it when you had to fix it?
Their contractor.
Their contractor.
Contractor broke it, they?
Right.
That's, reminds me of what we were born.
And they're paying for it to be fixed.
Oh, yes.
Okay, good, that, that's what I was wondering.
No, it's already fixed.
Okay. Um, also heard from a resident just shortly before coming in here, they said that there is a dumpster, maybe looks like there's a house being renovated, but there's a dumpster that's literally in the middle of East First Street behind his place.
Ah, yes, real walk container.
Can somebody check that out? Cause they're saying they ate it through, yeah, it's just sitting in the middle of the street.
It's in between.
Oh, yeah. They called me on my way here, I was like, what? Yeah, they said East First, right behind his place.
It's between.
I said, are you sure, is it a trash can or a dumpster, and they're like, it is a big dumpster.
It's a twenty yard row.
Twenty yards.
Yeah, and they just set it right up in Old Street.
Okay, I'll, I'll look at that in the morning, personally.
Thank you.
I'm glad that you mentioned something because right up the road from that, there's a, they replaced the pole back when we had a storm. And there's an electric line that's probably, I don't know, maybe about that far on the top, about they're picking up trash and trash truck. Which, if you go a little bit further to the side, could actually strike someone's truck, personal truck, so.
Send some of the air out of your tires in that road.
Well, I would try it, but I don't have any on me.
Okay, I'll have them look at that.
Yeah.
It's just down the road from that?
Yeah, it's a drive, yeah.
Okay, I'll look at that in the morning.
It's in, it's in between, it's the East First side between, uh, North Hickory and North Bergen.
Okay, if I forget that, I'll call you.
Appreciate it, I'll be your GPS.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mark.
Mrs. Not here with us tonight. Alderwoman Cisco, we had dinner for a while.
I'm, I'm meeting, um, I was not here last meeting to update.
I was not here last meeting to update you, but we did have a finance, uh, committee meeting that was very successful, a lot of community outreach, a lot of asking questions, a lot of questions being answered, um, so that was very much appreciated. I did announce at that meeting that Sherry Lee resigned from the finance committee meeting. Uh, we do hate to miss or lose her from that committee. She was a huge asset, she was one to, um, dig deep, dig really strong, far deep into the budget, and she found errors if there was, but she was also very, um, she was very smart with numbers, so huge asset when it came to that. She knew how to make a dollar out of a penny, so that's something we are going to miss from her. So I wish her the best of luck and want to thank her for the many years that she has spent on that committee. She was very, um, she's going to be very missed. Also, I, and I would like to announce that I have enjoyed the last three years on the board. My first year and a half, I would say, was a whole lot of learning. I've enjoyed it. It's not always been easy, it's not always been the most cheerful time, you can ask my husband, um, but I have truly enjoyed being on this board and working with all of you. That being said, this last year or so, um, I say year or so because I came in and replace of somebody else who had resigned, but Kim went to mayor, so I had taken her seat, so, has been a whole lot of building. Building as in things that not a lot of the community I can see, but trust that the alderman and the mayor and the administrator and all of the heads of each department do have the best interest for this city, and I have enjoyed being a huge asset to that. And I look forward to seeing what all the committee does in the future.
Cry out.
I'm not going to cry, just very emotional when you think of where we started and where we're going and what we're doing with it, but I'm not going to cry. But I do want to announce that I will be running again, um, this coming April, so I'm hoping that I can continue to have the city's support and, um, continue to watch the city grow and move in a positive direction. And not saying that it's going to be quick, I'm not saying that you're going to see all of the turnouts just snap, snap like we wish. If we could, I would wave a wand and say, let it happen, but unfortunately, that's not how some of these changes are, um, showing. So it's a lot of behind the scenes, a lot of late nights, a lot of long, long meetings, but every bit of it, every amount of my time has been worth seeing the amount of growth in our staff and our budget and within the companies, um, or within the city. I, I think the city is a company because it is, but, um, I do want to announce that I will be running again in April.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate, uh, all of your, everything that you do for our city, Kelly. I'm going to try to see if I can get you to cry, but it's not working.
It's not going to work.
All right. Mary, run along, Homer Lord, I have a report this evening.
What?
Alder Williams.
I just have like minor side projects that have really been going on. The rally guys reached out to me, uh, they would like to try to put a ham radio tower for communication up on, uh, on one of our water towers. Uh, I've asked them to reach out to the city admin, admin to see what we can do to help out because it's mainly for emergency response, anything that we can do. I know they just had a tragedy just recently, so trying to, they're trying to make sure everything is going on, uh, you know, everything is well communicated, uh, so when it happens again, they're not lost for information. But that's something they'd like to do. They'd also like to, uh, work with the city on trying to add, since we have one of the longest now running national rallies, uh, in the nation, uh, for these types of events, they want to see if they can add, uh, Home of the Hundred Acre Wood, kind of like a, to, to part of our signage, uh, for the welcome, you know, when they're coming into Salem. I told them we have five signs, uh, and that they should work with us on the design so it doesn't look like it's tacky and put up as a side thought. But, uh, you know, they're willing to assist, you know, in, in, in the redesign and stuff like that and try to add, add to it. They just, you know, they, you know, they feel welcome and they're really happy with where they're at, they don't want to move, uh, and they'd really like to see that, how we have one of the more historic rallies. So that's, that's on the rally side. The only other thing, uh, I'm still working with SMTS, uh, on trying to get some public transit in. We're working on a route, uh, kind of together. I'm talking with MRPC still, uh, they didn't like my initial route that I made, uh, so we're, I'm trying to figure out, there's, there's a lot of, uh, regulations that they don't like, you know, buses making certain types of turns and things like that that I didn't know about until I submitted it, and they're like, no. So, but we're working with that, trying to get a route, trying to figure out how many stops we can do and seeing what kind of, uh, they, they have told me that they do not believe that it is going to be self-sufficient, like a self-sufficient route, uh, which then comes down to how does it get paid for. So I'm going to see what it takes for that and, you know, maybe we can get any involvement and advertisements on the buses and things like that. There's, there's options to try to do that, there's, you know, maybe if, you know, we're trying to provide a service, you know, we can add this to something in the budget with the, you know, the sales tax, it would be a public service that I think would be useful. I'm not sure if it's the right time for it yet, but that'll come, you know, during, uh, finance meetings and stuff like that. So we're trying to work out, trying to see what we can do. Uh, I know we were, uh, by MRPC studies, uh, we were signified as one of the, uh, hardest hit for transportation around here, as well as we have a lot of elderly here that, you know, have to make different appointments and things like that, so, uh, we have a very big need in their study, uh, and we're trying to fill that, so little by little. I'm hoping to, I'm hoping to see something in the next couple of months, uh, you know, and then we'll, we'll get a plan together and I'll, I'll submit it and we can see what we're happening, you know, see what's happening, um, as the new fiscal year turns around. And I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not running again, sorry, guys. That's all I have. Yeah, I know, I'm sorry.
All right.
Say that again.
Yes, it's all good. Alderwoman Duncan. All right, at this time, I will need a motion for closed session personnel.
I will move to go into closed session personnel.
I'll second.
All right, we'll call it a vote, Alderwoman's is good.
Yes.
Alderwoman Williams?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lord, yes, and Alderwoman Duncan. Thank you all.